Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Please rise and face the flag as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands in our nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Approval of agenda order? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and second, any objections? All right, seeing none, and so, yes? I'm sorry, I skipped the roll call. Go ahead, please.
Mayor Pooh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Costanzo.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Liao.
Here.
Okay, and do the motion and second still stand? Any objections? Okay, agenda order is approved. Next item, please.
Presentations, item A, recognition of La Gardenia Meat Market. This item has been rescheduled to the August 20th City Council meeting.
Okay, make you. Next item.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. In an effort to provide everyone with an opportunity to speak tonight, please be aware that all public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. You will receive a 30-second warning as you approach the end of your time. As a reminder, please be respectful of all speakers regardless of the position they take on any items. If you wish to address the City Council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, and our city attorney has a brief announcement.
Yeah, I have an announcement for the public that's interested in speaking on item, new business item 6A. That item is a bit unusual in that we will be taking public comment on that item now during the public comment period as opposed to when that item is called on the agenda. So if you have a comment for 6A, now is the time to present a card.
Okay, I don't have any speaker's request cards before me at the moment. Any member of the public like to address the San Gabriel City Council? Wow, nobody wants to talk to us. Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. Oh, okay, we'll take that. Yeah. Okay, Connie Rossi, please come to the podium. Yeah, go ahead and, once the materials are distributed, you can...
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Connie Rossi. I'm the president of Yindamongolia Chamber Commerce. Today, I'm present in Mongolia and the city called Yakusha City. They would like to friendship with our San Gabriel City. And all the information I provide, I guess, everybody in the hands. On the second page, the third page, all the introduce everything in the Yakusha City. And this city actually is in Mongolia nearby Russia border, and we called Holon Bear Grassland. And actually, I come from there. And my Mongolia Chamber Commerce here founded this over 10 years ago, and I live here 28 years. So the city mayor's actually is younger mayor and friend of mine, and would like to visit San Gabriel. They know San Gabriel City pretty well, because I have some more information send to Yakusha City about our San Gabriel City, all the activities, and they really interested in want to be friendship. I want to have three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, my point is, tonight, I drove all the way from Kamikla and come here just for, I really would like to be present Yakusha City and mayor friend of mine will be with San Gabriel City, try to relationship started, and they also, the mayor invite everybody to Yakusha City. And the city especially is most called Xing'an Forest Grassland, also the bigger forest that cover 78 percent of the forest, and air clean 98 percent. The population, 330,000 people. And the city's not that big in China, but the city special is high-tech city, also they are half A different, we call the white land. I don't know in here, that's called湿地. White land, yeah. Also, they have, the bigger part is, in the summer, you can go ski and skate. That's a unique special. The most of the city for tours, for high-tech, also for, we call the all the merchandise transportation in there, local extension, e-commerce extension there. I wish everybody pay attention on the Mongolia, the little city, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, any other member of the public like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Next item, please.
Item four, consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the City Council or audience requests separate discussion.
All right, yes?
Yes, I'd like to pull E and G.
E and G, all right. Anybody else? I was also going to pull E, so why don't we go ahead and proceed with E. Discussion on E, sorry. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Manchaca.
So, the first comment I had, is really the only comment, is that per the invite that's being distributed, it indicates that the event is from 2:00 to 10:00, and on this resolution it says 2:00 to 9:00. So I don't see anyone here from Ogo Pogo for clarification. I'm not sure if anybody out there, Claudia or Angelica, know anything about this, but I believe it should say 10 o'clock.
Can we get confirmation on that? Because all the staff report material says 2:00 to 9:00.
You can just go on to their website or their social media, and you'll see it's 2:00 to 10:00, the way it's being publicized.
Their application, which is what staff goes by on Attachment C, indicates 2:00 to 9:00. So that's what our approval would be, or that's what our temporary street closure approval would be, and the resolution would be.
Yes. Tracy, you have a comment? Thank you.
Good evening, Tracy Steinkruger with the Community Development Department. We limited the hours for the temporary use permit for the event. I think they cap off at 8:00, and then they wanted one additional hour to wind down, tear down in the street, so I think that's why it's listed as 9:00 on their application. So if we need to revise that, we can do so.
Well, if you want to just check to make sure, but according to the flyer or the invite, it says 10:00, that the event ends at 10:00.
We can talk to them about that, but they're limited to, I think the hours were 11:00 in their temporary use permit, from 11:00 until 8:00 p.m. So, we can talk to them about it.
Yeah, I think that, you know, procedurally, since their application sets street closure of 2:00 to 9:00, and that's what we're approving here, I think we have to just stick to 2:00 to 9:00. Yeah. Councilmember Costanzo.
Thank you. I did attend their last event where we closed down commercial, and it was well-attended, it was well-run, they had a check-in point. The only item of concern was the music had some very offensive words in it that was being blasted across the wash, and neighbors were coming out and kind of saying things. So I just wish they'd be more mindful of maybe whatever bands they have to be more appropriate in their songs. I know we can't protect everything, but I did get some complaints from the neighbors across the wash, just complaining of the inappropriate, just because it was so loud, it was blaring across everything, so if they can be a little bit more mindful of that. Otherwise, the event itself was wonderful.
Okay, thank you. So is it, the complaints that you received, were they mostly about the volume, or the content, or both?
Content, I think they were okay with the volume because it did turn up around 9:00, so... That wasn't the issue, it was just kind of what they were hearing being sung. And it wasn't every band, it was just, I think, one.
One in particular? So these are live bands that are performing?
Right.
That's interesting, because I don't really see that as part of the...
They do have a band area on the diagram.
I know there's a stage there, and I've been at events where they've used the stage, but that's, the live music is, I don't think it's really mentioned in either the resolution or the TUP. Can staff confirm there's been conversation with the business about the music?
So there's been no conversation, per se, with the staff at Ogo Pogo about the noise or content? They are subject to a condition of approval for the temporary use permit that says all audio equipment, whether it's canned music or live bands. If you shall be kept at a reasonable volume so as not to disturb neighboring residents or business tenants, and that it's subject to enforcement for disturbing the peace law by the Police Department. So that was a condition of approval that we added that applies to any of the four events that the TUP covers.
Well, I was going to suggest modification of one of the conditions of approval on the resolution, and I'm wondering if the council is also amenable to, or whether we are able to add another condition that... Because I do think that there is a difference between live music and music being played by a DJ to a certain extent. So I would suggest that we add a condition P to Section 2 of the resolution that says all music shall be subject to, I don't know how I want to put it, the... We can restate that, you know, all music shall be subject to the reasonable, you know, regulation and community standards of the San, of the city of San Gabriel. It is, but I guess the line I'm trying to walk here is between, it's not, you know, it's not itself a city event, it's a private, private event. And maybe the city attorney can help as to whether or not we can regulate the, you know, content of music.
I was waiting for a chance to jump in. I mean, this raises First Amendment issues.
Exactly.
So, you know, normally, we can't regulate based on content, and I'm, this is a private location. I can also tell you that if you are going to try to regulate based on content, having a vague regulation like that is much worse, because it creates a situation where there's some uncertainty, and we may end up accidentally sort of regulating certain folks one way and other folks another, even though the content is similar. So I would recommend against a content-based restriction. Instead, what you should be thinking about if you want to try to limit that is some kind of what we would call a time, place, and manner restriction that would apply to everybody. So for example, if the content is offensive because people are hearing it across the wash, maybe controlling the overall volume of the content would be a way of getting at that issue without necessarily coming at it from the standpoint of trying to regulate a certain kind of speech.
Yeah, I mean, the First Amendment issues were what were going through my mind and trying to craft something here on the spot, but I guess if the, you know, the, one of the conditions of the TUP are, you know, already states the, has the volume regulation in it, and the disturbing of peace laws as being sort of an overriding factor in it. I think, you know, just while we're on it, on the subject, you know, it's probably going to be fine. I do have, you know, some trepidation about just allowing, in the past, we've not allowed, you know, street closures for private business, nor have we allowed, you know, consumption of alcohol in the private right of way. And this is something that I feel like we need to have a better understanding of what the potential risks and liabilities are for us as a city, even if we're covered by insurance and indemnification from the business, so forth and so on. Because it was going to become more frequent, and I noticed that this TUP is sort of like a pre-authorization of, you know, four different event dates, two of which have already passed, but if this were going to become more regular occurrence, then I think it's something we need to sort of understand better so we can have a more informed decision about the sort of perceived risks and perceived benefits for us as a community. So that being said, you know, my only comment with respect to the resolution was in, on Condition O, just because I wanted the language to be a bit stronger, that the business is going to be responsible for all safety and security in connection with the event. I suggest amending the language to read, "The applicant shall be responsible," and insert, so, sorry, let me start over to read. "The applicant shall," and insert, "be responsible for all safety and security considerations in connection with this event, comma, including, comma, without limitation, comma, providing additional security guards for this event, and controlling the serving of alcohol and preventing the serving of minors." I just want to make it clear that, you know, if they want to have their, a private event there, then, you know, all the risk should be shifted to the business. Whether or not that will actually save us in the event of an issue, I don't know, but I'd like to have as much protection as we possibly can upfront. So that was my comment on it, and I think, you know, we, I've spoken with the city manager about this yesterday at our weekly meeting, and again, if this is going to become more regular occurrence, then I think we need to develop a, maybe a more thoughtful policy with respect to these types of events, especially where it's a bit unusual, that it's a street closure for a private party, and also, you know, alcohol is obviously involved, so that we're not exposing ourselves in ways that we don't, you know, we're not aware of. So, but with that, I would support the, I will support the item, you know, with the amendment to the, to the, to the condition.
Mr. Mayor, may I make two comments? One, as far as the content, I would agree with the city attorney that that's not something that we can regulate, but we can definitely talk to the applicant, to the owner, business owner, and if they want to have another street closure and have the City Council support it, I'm sure that they will do whatever it takes to make sure that we don't get complaints from those folks across the wash. So we will make sure to have that conversation sooner rather than later with them. And second of all, on Condition O, if it would be acceptable to the mayor and the council, I would like to add language to that same condition, just saying that they would have to provide a security plan that would be approved by the Police Department beforehand, so that the Police Department can talk to them about the number of security guards and all of those logistics, and have somebody that's smarter than me look at that and make sure that it's sufficient.
Right.
I have a question. So our police officer will be at the event, or no?
Our police officers will not be at the event. I mean, they will know about it, and they will show up if need be, but we would anticipate events like this be put on without burdening the community, and part of that would be making sure they have adequate private security that would handle it.
Well, my biggest concern is, this is for profit, right? I'm, they're selling alcohol, and we have to provide the security on the taxpayers' dollars, so it doesn't make sense.
That's correct. So I would hope that the, or would ensure that the security plan provides that adequate security at no cost to the city, so that we would have as least chance as possible of having city staff have to go out and handle any incidents out there.
Yeah, I'm amenable to the city manager's suggestion, and I think I feel, have a little, feel a little bit more at ease if we have an opportunity to review the security plan and ensure that they have adequate security, you know. Oftentimes, too, when, I think there could be a wide variance in the, in the sort of contractors or people that you hire to provide that security, to do the ID checks. You know, normally, for instance, for our dumplings and beer, you know, we need, we make sure that, you know, we use, it's our own, either our own staff or it's personnel that are qualified and trained in doing that service, making sure that anybody who has a wristband or who's allowed to consume alcohol, to purchase and consume alcohol is over the age of 21, so forth and so on. Because you could imagine also just having, you know, somebody off the street and it being rather permissive, or more permissive than it really legally should be. So I like that addition to Condition O. Does anybody else have any comments?
And I think they did provide wristbands all the time.
Yeah. I mean, that's the easiest way to do these kinds of events, but however they do it, it's all up to them, and I think us having a chance to review it is probably a good thing. All right? We're all in agreement then, those changes? Okay, why don't you go ahead with item G?
Should we actually motion that separately because we amended it? So I'd make a motion to accept it as amended. That way, we can vote on it and get it.
Just do item E first now as amended? Sure, that's not a problem. So is there a motion for item E?
I'll motion to amendment.
Okay.
I said I'll motion it as amended, and if they get a second.
Okay. So a motion from Councilmember Harrington, how about a second from Councilmember Liao? Okay, motion and second, let's vote on the board.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, Vice Mayor Manchaca, item G.
Yes, so for those of us who were on the Fourth of July parade, and we were on one side facing Ginopera Place, I think we remember how, as we were waving, the residents there were pleading that their street be fixed. And it just happens to be here today, and I wanted to ask our public works director, just in the spirit of being a good neighbor, you know, that street is in severe need of repair, and it's been like that for years and years, and we have the San Gabriel Mission Fiesta coming up, and that street is used quite a bit. And so my question is, is there any way of getting this done before the Fiesta, which is October 30th, I'm sorry, August 30th through September 1st? That's just for Ginopera Place.
Yes. Hello, Mayor and council members. The quick answer is I do not believe so. We have not even advertised for bid, that takes a while, then we have to prepare our contract, it has to get reviewed, it has to be approved by council. So we're not even close to the construction award yet. I don't think we can get it done by that date. I'm expecting actual construction to probably begin somewhere in September, possibly October.
Okay. Well, I thought it would try for one last time, so hopefully it'll last us a long time for many more Fiestas to come, so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So Greg, I just have a, you know, recommendation, because for same thing, Las Tunas, we have so many potholes, but our public works just did the patching work, probably for this street, you know, because the Fiesta is coming up, and so many people park on that streets, and so I think maybe that's a good idea to avoid all liabilities for the city, and maybe just ask the public works to do some patching works on that street.
Along Las Tunas?
Not Las Tunas. This street is right next to Mission, what's the name of the street? It's right in the cemetery.
Broadway?
Oh, so, Jero Place. It's a small street across from the check building, and it's pretty much just parking on one side, yeah.
Okay.
So, just patch that street.
We can go review that, but the work we do is going to be ground away in a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't even think it's worth it. I might, it might be wise to have the crews spend effort on places that won't be torn right out a month later. But we'll, we'll review it, we don't want it unsaved.
Yeah, see if we can do a quick fix.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Okay. All right, then, is there a motion for A through D and F, and F through H?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you, next item, please.
Item five, public hearing. Adoption of Resolution Number 1931 to update the city's citywide master fee schedule. Staff request that the public hearing be opened for the purpose of continuing the public hearing to the August 20th, 2019 regular City Council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, while you're looking that up in your agenda, just some info for the council. When we notice a public hearing, we put that in the paper, and we send out notices long before the actual item comes up, and in between preparing the item and getting it ready for council agenda, the finance director and I found a couple of items that we wanted to drill down on a little further, so that's why that's being pulled tonight, to give us another month to put that info together. And if we continue it to August 20th, and a date certain, then we won't have to re-notice it, all of that work will have been done, and we can just hold that hearing on the 20th. So that's why we're asking that to be continued for the purposes of, or open, excuse me, for the purposes of continuing.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. But I assume this is just related to the speed-hump policy? Or is there other amendments to the fee schedule?
The latter. We were looking through and trying to just, not justify, but to sleuth out where all of our fees come from, so making sure that we can find all of the documents that created those fees. Part of the work we're doing in cleaning up the finances of the city and making sure we understand how everything works.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, no objection, that item is, I guess, deferred until August 20th?
So, we're looking for a motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll move, to move into the August 20th.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, motion and second, let's vote on the board.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, next item.
Item six, new business. Project preview. Self-storage Facility Plan Development. Development Agreement. Tentative Parcel Map and Precise Plan of Design at 414 South San Gabriel Boulevard. Planning Case Number PD-19-001. Applicant 1784 Capital Holdings LLC. The city attorney will explain the parameters for this item, and the presentation will be made by Assistant Planner Monique Garabey.
Would you like me to give the quick explanation?
Please do.
So, this is the second, I believe, of preview items that we've gotten on this, this is in response, obviously... This is in response, obviously, to city council request to get sort of previews of items before it comes up to you for approval. I think as, as my associate explained to you last time, the purpose now is not to make comment or to give an analysis of the project. It's really just to serve as a heads up. For that same reason, we're not taking public comment as part of the agenda item. So this is just for you to soak it in and we can move on to the next thing afterwards. Unless you need some clarifying questions.
Okay. Thank you for that. City Attorney, go ahead. Please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Matt Chang from the Community Development Department. And the item before you tonight is self-storage facility located at 414 South San Gabriel Boulevard. And this is a project preview in front of you. And the subject location is located on the east side of South San Gabriel Boulevard. And to the north a little bit is the Broadway. And adjacent to the south side is Commercial Avenue. And the subject zoning is currently Zone C3, which is a commercial and limited line manufacturing zoning. And the subject site, the general plan designation for the subject site is general commercial. And for this project, the proposed project would have merged 11 parcels. And the project would construct approximately 200,000 square feet of a self-storage facilities. And the building itself will be three floors above ground, so basically three stories. But also have a two subterranean or equal basement floor. And the project will provide approximately, probably 20 parking spaces. And just proposed elevations for your review and a couple rendering, one is from Commercial Avenue. And the other one is from the interior of the site, looking at the building. And it's like, staff would like to point out that the building is three-story tall and the building height is about 45 feet. And for this particular project, a plan development application, development agreement, tentative parcel map, as well as precise plan of design application are required. And planning commission will serve as a recommending body for the plan development, development agreement, as well as a tentative parcel map. And city council will be the final decision maker for the plan development, development agreement, and tentative parcel map. And if the project is approved by the city council and the precise plan of design, which is architecture design of the building, will subject to Design Review Commission for review and approval. And as for the environmental review, the project is in early stages of a review process. And this project was submitted back in April and a revised plan was submitted in late June of this year. And so the applicant is currently working with a traffic engineering consulting firm to prepare a traffic and also parking studies. And as part of environmental review process, staff is anticipating that mitigated negative decoration is required. However, staff will do a full environmental review once staff had a chance to look at the entire project and also working with an environmental consultant. And once the project is being completed by staff and the request for proposal will going out to different consulting firms to solicit a bid for the environmental review of this project. And in conclusion, staff is recommending this council to review and also file the staff report for this preview item. And staff like to point out that the project applicant is here to answer any questions. But in conclusion, staff, staff is a bit of any question as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chang. Questions? Vice Mayor Machaca?
Yes. I wanted to, I couldn't quite understand the, the traffic route. So I understand there's going to be some type of egress ingress on San Gabriel Boulevard. But would the other street be commercial or is it going to be Gladys? Or where exactly is the other exit entrance?
The current design will have two access point. One is off South San Gabriel Boulevard. And the other one is to the south, which is Commercial Avenue. So that's the two access point. Staff like to point out the proposed project will likely to have approximately 25 feet right-of-way dedication on the South Gladys Avenue. And there's also kind of a loading garage door entered from the subject site to the Gladys Avenue. And staff will need to work with various departments such as Public Works Department, Fire Department, and there's also Police Department to figure out what the requirement is and make sure the driveway, the access comply with all the city requirements codes.
Okay. And then the next question is, you know, I actually worked for public storage for five, five, eight years. I forget now. It's been a while. But typically you don't see underground excavation in this side of, of the, of the country. And so I'm just trying to understand, why did they take that recourse to do underground storage?
The project applicant or the developers here, so maybe they can elaborate on the proposed idea of underground basement storage unit inside of everything above ground.
Would the applicant like to make a comment? All right, thank you.
Hi, my name's Kelly McComb with 1784 Capital Holdings. A number of our projects that, that we have done, we do have below-grade parking or below-grade storage. Many of the reasons, many of the times the reason we've done it is that in a lot of municipalities, the square footage isn't counted as a part of the FAR. So in order to get a project, you know, we will do a feasibility study with the amount of square footage that we think the property can maintain. And based on that, we try to build to that, to an amount that we can, is able to be developed on the site. And going below grade gives us an opportunity to put a little bit more on it and not affect the FAR that we have to work with.
So the, the underground, would that just be storage or you're also going to have parking? Okay.
No, no, no. Just strictly storage. All storage.
What other locations do you have that has underground in California?
Below grade, we have it, a project we have in Ora Valley. We have projects in Arizona. We have projects in California. And we have one project that we're about to break ground on that we're going to have four story, five stories above and four stories below.
Okay. And what was the name of those, the name of the projects? Like if I want to look one up in California?
They're on our, they're on our website. So if you go to 1784capitalholdings.com, the one project is Steam Pump Village.
Okay.
It's in Ora Valley, Arizona. The other one is in Bethesda, Maryland. It's called West Bard Self-Storage.
Okay.
And then we have some others that you'll see our plan there. It tells you how many we have above and how many below.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Leal?
Thank you, Mayor. So actually, it comes to this subterranean storage. Because you probably think, oh, the height for the city of San Gabriel is only three-story. But actually, in this case, we allow five stories. So if you want to build five stories, this is, you know, allowed by our municipal code. One question, one question is, because this is prime, prime San Gabriel commercial street, you know. San Gabriel Boulevard is a busy street. Most of public storage is on, right next to the freeway, right next to the wash, and right next to the railroad. Actually, there's one right next to railroad, just down the street. But anyway, is it possible, because, you know, we can have commercial stores on the ground floor? For instance, we have, we have a public storage building and it was built 65 years ago. It was, this still is the tallest building on Las Tunas Drive. And they have three shops underneath it. And so, you know, right next to the Bank of America. And from the outside, most of the people don't even notice it's a public storage. So I, my suggestion, you know, if it's possible, they can have stores on the ground floor. So that's my suggestion. And other than that, I think security is number one situation right now. I think if you listen to our police department, a lot of break-ins, especially for self-storage spaces now. So maybe you require to put a lot of surveillance cameras and tighten up the security. Is there another project in LA County? Because most of your project in Arizona, Santa Barbara County. But is there another project in here in Loco? No?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you, councilmember, for the, for the response, I mean, for the question. My name is Juan Garza. I work for England, the Canadian Alliance. I'm a consultant to the applicant. To answer your question, the applicant does have nationwide projects occurring in Southern California. They have one project right now that it's in construction. It's in the city of Hawthorne. But they don't have anything that it's explicitly developed at this point in time. But they are actively soliciting other sites as well throughout Southern California. So they're going to be expanding the footprint here locally. But if you don't, if you don't mind, to Vice Mayor Machaca's question before, we'd be happy to give you also, to your staff, a listing of some of the other projects that the, that the applicant has completed as well for your convenience. So when we make sure to send that to your staff, so they'll be able to provide to you as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Sosa?
Thank you. I don't know if I was dreaming, but I thought I saw somewhere about something on cold storage. Am I incorrect on that? Okay. Hopefully, all of your projects have been successful. But what happens after you do subterranean? If a project over the years would not be successful, those are all, I don't know how to answer the question, but they're all little units. I mean, could, could there ever be a reuse, reuse of something like that? And I'm more concerned about subterranean. At the top of the ground, you can do different things. So I don't know if I'm asking the question appropriately, but...
As part of this application, this is a plan development. So if the project is approved, the applicant will enter a development agreement with the city. Talk about the term, the conditions, the parameter was approved. So if there's any changes, for example, if the self-storage project doesn't work out, if there's any change to the project, they would need to modify that term of agreement and the parameter of what was approved, the uses, the square footage, for example. And the parking requirement will be significantly different from one use than this particular use. So it's most likely will go back to this body for, for a modification.
But can it be modified after you've done that subterranean? That's, I guess, my concern.
There will be a lot of items, staff looking at it, for example, that the uses, the parking green, parking spaces that's required, the impact. But also the other items will be for, for building safety, fire department, about, because currently what is proposed is for subterranean basement storage, not for commercial spaces. So it'll be a lot of different components. That's from climbing perspective, also for building safety, Fire Department, Police Department, to see if the basement could be used for something else than storage. So that a lot of, to be, we'll need to review it. So staff does have the answer right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I have two questions for the applicant and one for the staff. Maybe first for the applicant. You know, I noticed in the staff report here, you know, one of the questions staff has posed to you is, but whether there's demand for self, self-storage warrants a project of this size. Have you begun a market feasibility study and our demand study for this type of self-storage in this area? Because I'll, I'll note that there's a public storage right across the train tracks from where you're proposing this project.
Before we enter into an escrow, we do a feasibility study for self-storage and look at the incomes, look at the population, look at the other facilities that are there. And based on the population and the supply, come up with an unmet, an unmet demand number. And based on that, we make the decision whether we want to go forward or not. And this, and in this particular case, there's more than ample unmet demand based on the population and the supply that's here.
And is that something that you can share with our staff?
Sure. We're happy to.
Thank you. Secondly, with five levels of storage, how many storage units approximately are you thinking that would include?
It would probably be around 1,500 to 1,600 units. And that would be, they'd be anywhere from five by five to 10 by 20, maybe a few 10 by 30s.
Thank you. And for staff, my question was, other than the potential increase in, in property tax revenue due to reassessment after the, after the construction is done, are there other, are there any other benefits in terms of enhanced revenue that we can anticipate from the project as currently proposed?
This, part of this application process will be the plan development, also development agreement. So staff will be working with various departments, the city attorney's office, and also the applicant to determine what kind of a community benefit or determine agreement, in terms of development agreement, need to be in, in that agreement. So there'll be ongoing conversation, discussion with various departments, city attorney's office, as well as the applicant. So since the project is still in a, only two months process in, so there'll be a lot of refinement and review needs to be going on, going this, going forward, so.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that, you know, there would be a community benefit package associated with this, especially since, you know, it's a plan development overlay. It is a spot zoning, so to speak. Excuse me. But no, I meant in terms of ongoing revenue, you know, I wanted to understand whether it would, there's other revenue that the city would be looking to receive, you know, as a result of this project. So for example, you know, in our, in mixed-use projects, you know, oftentimes we're expecting a certain amount of sales tax revenue from the commercial components. Of course, there's property tax revenue from the project itself. And then, of course, as those, if there's condo units or something being sold, those are obviously when they're reassessed, we, you know, get a benefit in terms of increased property tax revenue. If there are residents there who have landlines or utilities, there's UUT and utility users' tax revenue. If it's hotel is part of the project, there's transient occupancy tax revenue. I mean, I, none of those categories, to me, seem to apply for this particular project. So I want to understand and be clear for the record right now, what would be the additional revenue to the city from this project?
Matt, if I can answer that, if you don't mind. My experience, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, is no. Other than, and this will be not related to this project, so we're not running afoul of commenting on this project specifically. But in self-storage as a whole, it is generally property tax what a city would receive. There will be a small amount of sales tax associated with selling, moving supplies and boxes and that kind of thing, but it's negligible. The ancillary benefits, which we would not be able to quantify, a lot of times businesses use self-storage units as a way to add to their capacity. And so that is a feedback to the community. But the quick answer is no. This becomes a convenience for the community and whatever property tax dollars come back. But that is something that the environmental document will have to study and look at, the economic benefits. And as Mr. Chang mentioned, we will include that in whatever community benefit we bring back to the planning commission and ultimately to the council to consider, because that would be a way, a benefit that you would have to weigh versus the land use that does not return much to the community.
Yeah, thank you. Understood. I think that kind of dovetails off of Councilmember Leal's comment too, that, you know, it is prime. The frontage on San Gabriel Boulevard is prime commercial and one of the very few parts of the city that, you know, we do have a, a commercial boulevard, the other portion of it being more industrial. But it is a rather large... But it is a rather large site, once you consolidate all the lots. I want to say it's two acres, almost two acres. Is that right? Let's see here. I know it's in here somewhere. One point seven four, yeah. Okay, so, thank you. Appreciate the report. Any other questions? Okay, Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want a little clarification from the city attorney. I don't want to run afoul of the specific comments on this project, but it seems like we've already had a couple that were pretty specific. Because I had some clarifications that were kind of point, counterpoint on that, so I didn't know if those were okay. Because we're giving design suggestions.
Right, I, I know.
Which I don't think we should be doing. But if we are, we need to be clear with the applicant, so they don't go with those design. Because the FAR was mentioned, five stories was mentioned. This is a planned development, so those five stories don't apply. I, I just want to comment on that. And if we're running afoul, I think we should have stopped it earlier, so we don't send this applicant down the wrong road. Because if you're going to allow the five stories, then you have to apply the FAR of point seven, which just way exceeds point seven. So I think that's the trade-off they're giving. They're giving us a low-impact project to the community for a trade-off of a larger FAR. So I just want to make sure that we're not saying, hey, put it up to five stories now. Because that's not, I don't think we're giving that design input. I just want to clarify, we are not directing that.
We should not be giving design input at this time.
Correct, okay. That, so, that's kind of what, the way I'm framing that. I'm not telling this developer what to do, but if you're going to follow the code, follow the code. If you're not going to follow the code, work with the staff. That would be my comment on that. And like Jason said, I would like to see some sort of benefits package, considering this is going to be a one-time rather than a long-term revenue as far as like sales tax and all the other taxes that you measured. That would be something that really helps. And I do see the need, because we did close the, we didn't, train closed the other storage facility on Del Mar, so that took out quite a lot of units. So I know there was a kind of a, there was a market price adjustment when that happened at the other places. One thing, this is for staff and for the developer. This area is the, it's very sensitive for excavation. This is a native, this area is very, there's a lot of native artifacts. That street in particular is where the wash runs, or near the wash. That wash, before the Army Corps of Engineers came in and created it, was an actual river. It was one of the rivers that came through here. It was a gathering place for the natives. And I've spoken to several of the people that know the archaeology on that area. I would advise you to contact them, because they can tell you literally where the bodies are buried. I mean, they have burial grounds around there. They had gathering places, they had ceremonies there. So you are going to find artifacts at a very shallow depth. Even though the Army Corps came in there and disturbed it, they actually didn't, the old, the old practice is they didn't move the earth that far. So there may be disturbed artifacts that have actually been relocated from their original. So I'd be very cautious as to the excavation and coordinate with the locals, the local native tribes. Or tribe, let's say tribes, there's one, but it's split. The last, this is for staff going forward on, I, I like the format, it's getting a little better. The one comment is on page two, where you reference the San Gabriel Municipal Code. If you could just kind of, in the middle, where it says SGM C, if you could split it and put the actual code citation, that speeds up our review. Because when I go there and I look at the FAR, I mean, I had to go look up the code manually, but if I had the quick citation, I could look it up quickly. Saves me about twenty minutes, so I really appreciate it. It shouldn't be too much, because, you know, I'm looking at the proposal versus the SGM C, and I'm just saying, okay, yeah, one for twenty-five hundred, but I'd like to be able to get there faster. So that's just a comment to staff. Other than that, I, I like the format, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Harrington's comment about, you know, design guidance. And in fact, you know, I think, you know, more typically, previews in front of the council are when a project is a little bit further along than, than this particular project. But, but, you know, it's good that we have a heads-up, an opportunity to take a look at what's, what is currently, you know, being sought by the applicant. So, any other?
I just wanted to add, when you put the community benefit package of sorts, I know that there is a, there is a great demand for these storage facilities, in particular, communities like ourselves, that our units, our housing units are getting smaller. And there's a need for our residents to have a place to store their stuff. And so I think that's part of the community benefits. It's hard to measure, and we're not going to be getting, you know, revenue per se. However, there's a need as we, as we get smaller in our housing options in this community. So if that could be looked at carefully, and I'm sure the applicant could give us a lot of information about that, but in particular, in our area, I think that's where it becomes quite a benefit. So, that's all.
Okay, good. All right, thank you both, the applicant and the staff, for bringing this preview. I'm sure this process will be ongoing. And we'll be right on top of it. Next item, please.
Okay, item B, Economic Development Update. Presentation will be made by Management Assistant Claudia Gellen.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Claudia Gellen, and I am the Management Assistant for the Economic Development Division. Tonight, I would like to provide you with an Economic Development Update presentation. I do want to let you know in advance that I will be going through an extensive amount of information. And I recognize that I may be sharing some information that you've probably heard in the past, but it's been several years since we have provided an update on economic development. And there has been interest and questions that have come up over the last few years. And I would like to take this opportunity to answer some of those. Before I get into that, I do want to give you a little background on myself. I began my position as a Management Assistant in the Economic Development Division in October of 2018. Prior to that, I was an NIS officer in the city for about two years. And I had an interest in economic development since I first started here, and I'm very grateful to officially be a part of this effort. San Gabriel is my full, my first full-time experience and probably the city that I will learn most from. I'm currently working on my Masters of Public Administration and expect to complete my program this December. So far, this program has served me very well in my professional development, and I have been able to apply much of, much of what I have learned at school to my current position. So just as a presentation overview, tonight I'll be discussing what is economic development? What are its challenges? What are national retailers looking for? Our recent successes? Economic development trends? The Tourism and Marketing Improvement District? And how we will be moving forward from here? Typically, economic development can be described by these objectives. Business attraction. We continually reach out to both national and independent businesses. We show them that we are business-friendly and serve as a city's ombudsman and concierge. We show them sites that would make most sense for their business. And one way of doing this is by attending ICSC conventions to meet with and discover new national retailers and present opportunity in San Gabriel. So we're salespeople, and our job is to sell San Gabriel. We sell it to the developers, the retailers, and the public. Business retention is accomplished by maintaining good communication with businesses, meeting with them on an ongoing basis to discuss current operations, future needs, determine plans for changes or expansions. We are the go-to people that much of the business community seek for help. Business retention is important to the city, because successful businesses keep sales tax in the community to help fund services like police, parks, street improvements, and recreation. And create and retain jobs. Economic development is about people, the workforce, creating jobs and retaining jobs locally. Bringing new businesses to this city is what leads to new jobs and an economically healthy community. We work closely with site selectors and developers to attract new business and promote underutilized or vacant land for development. We encourage property, we, I'm sorry, we engage property owners to sell or enter into agreements with developers or neighboring landowners if land assembly is needed. And lastly, we place a strong emphasis in marketing and promoting our businesses, because we want to ensure that the, we want to ensure the people from the region come and discover our restaurants and businesses. We also believe in bringing the community together to celebrate our culture. And we do this by hosting events like the Dumpling and Beer Fest and the Cinco de Mayo Mercado. With all this in mind, no city is without its challenges in accomplishing these objectives. And so let's start by talking about some regional challenges throughout the San Gabriel Valley and greater LA region that can make economic development hard to accomplish, and then narrow it down to San Gabriel. First, the land value in this area is high. Second, construction costs keep rising. This is due to rising costs in materials and a labor shortage. So how do developers combat this? One way to combat this is by building up. This is how they recoup, this is how they recoup their costs, which is why there have been an abundance of mixed-use projects appearing in the region, rather than seeing large retail shopping centers be developed. And third, there is no raw land available, so we are seeing a lot of infill development occurring. Specific to San Gabriel, this is a city with small parcels that require land assembly for a good redevelopment to occur. For example, in the Mission District, there are several parcels that are independently owned, and we have heard from property owners that they would prefer to hold on to their properties and pass the land on to their children in the future. Another challenge we're facing is an ambivalence toward locating in mixed-use projects, especially from national retailers. They don't see San Gabriel dense enough to enter these types of buildings. They prefer to have their own parking lots where people can pull up directly in front of the business. And lastly, the question we get most, which is why, why don't we have an American grocer? As I mentioned, this has to be the number-one question that economic development gets. We've had many discussions with national grocery stores over the years. We understand the community's desire to see an American grocery store in San Gabriel and have worked diligently to highlight the possibilities the city has to offer. But the fact of the matter is that expansion for grocers has been very minimal in the last few years. In fact, Albertson's and Ralph's have consistently closed underperforming stores in Southern California for the past ten years. And we do not need to look any further than our own city, where 168 Market replaced Albertson's on East Las Tunas over seven years ago, or Alhambra, who more recently lost Ralph's at 345 East Main, where the 99 Ranch Market is now located. Grocery store closures can be attributed to the spread of big retailers such as Target, Target, Walmart, and even the 99 Cent Store, who have been pushing their food sections in the recent years, as well as competition from specialty gourmet operations and discount grocers such as Whole Foods, Aldi, or Grocery Outlet. Also, the goal of the gross, the goal of these grocers is not to be in every city. Their goal is to saturate the market. Once a grocer feels that they have saturated the area, there's no need for them to add anything else. They're very cognizant of the fact that people from San Gabriel will drive two and a half miles north to go to Trader Joe's. But we do know that there is interest. City staff continue to reach out to grocery retailers and have had some positive conversations with newer types of grocers. We know developers in San Gabriel who are trying to appeal to the American grocers, and we're hopeful to see a new grocery store concept enter the San Gabriel market within the next two to three years. And here's a general idea of the grocery stores within three and five miles of our reach. That first blue circle is the three-mile radius, and the one around it is the five-mile radius. As you can see, there are several grocery stores in this area. And as previously, previously mentioned, retailers are not looking to locate within every city boundary. In San Gabriel, we have at least six grocers. And some of the national grocers, who know that there are six existing grocery stores in the city, have told us that it may be hard to compete with them. To give you a better sense, we've had these conversations with Trader Joe's, Whole Foods, Albertson's Grocery Outlet, Kroger, and Viata. And the grocery stores in San Gabriel are Hawaii Market, San Gabriel Superstore, 168 Market, Good Fortune, 99 Ranch Market, and Mitsua. And in San Gabriel, we not only hear about the grocer, but the desire to have different retail types. So I'd like to take a moment and walk you through In-N-Out's minimum standards for a site. They want to see traffic count, traffic counts on a street that average fifty thousand vehicles per day, a population of over sixty thousand, a median income of forty-five thousand or more, a lot size of forty-five thousand square feet, a building area of three thousand eight hundred square feet. They want to be able to seat seventy-five people within the restaurant and twenty people outside in the patio, a minimum of forty-five dedicated parking spaces, and a drive-through lane that can stack twelve cars or more. So you might look at some of these and think, oh, well, we have that part. But for In-N-Out, to want to come to our city, we need to be able to satisfy all of these. We don't have a population of sixty thousand, and we would need to find a location on an intersection where we can combine the traffic counts of both major streets to satisfy their fifty thousand minimum requirement. Currently, our highest traffic count is on Lower San Gabriel Boulevard, and that is an average of forty, forty thousand vehicles per day. And again, simply by, simply coming by a forty-five thousand square foot lot in the city can present its own challenges. So we have had some conversations with Target recently and have learned a little bit more about what they're looking for nowadays. And to no one's surprise, they want to be on a major corridor in a highly dense area with co-tenancy and a large shopping center with restaurants, coffee users, fitness centers, and even a Macy's like the one in Eagle Rock. So for a full-size Target to come into San Gabriel, we would need to find a lot size that can fit a hundred thirty thousand square foot building, which would be very hard to come by in this city. But Target is adapting to the changing retail trends. They know that many of their customers are looking for convenience shopping and would ra, would rather order laundry detergent from Amazon and have it shipped to their house, rather than taking a trip to the Target store, finding a place to park, and walk through the hundred thirty thousand square foot store to find it. Target has adapted to the trends and has implemented drive-up areas where you can, where you can order through an app, and someone will bring the items to your car when they're ready for pickup. Also, over the last couple of years, Target has introduced smaller-scale stores known as Target Express. These buildings are approximately thirty thousand square feet, and they are looking to enter into an existing commercial building. They're not interested in building from the ground up, as construction costs are too high. They are also ambivalent toward entering mixed-use projects. For Target, their main reason is that they don't want to deal with customers having to fight with, fight for parking with residents, and they don't want to deal with limited or shared parking scenarios that, that would exist in a mixed-use project. They only enter into mixed-use projects where they feel there really is just no other choice in that area, such as downtown LA or Koreatown. But again, we do know that there is interest to be in San Gabriel, and these are things that we are still working on. I'm going to transition to some of the successes we've had this last year, because I think our efforts in bringing both national retailers and independent businesses can be definitely highlighted here. Starbucks, we can finally say San Gabriel has a Starbucks. We also have our first brewery called Ogo Pogo Brewing, who is now looking to expand their business to offer wine tasting. Bon Chon Chicken, which is a Korean fried chicken chain that exists all over the United States, in states like New York, Texas, New Jersey, Virginia, and Hawaii. Bopo Mofo, a Chinese-American cafe serving a modern twist on food and boba. This cafe has over thirty thousand followers on Instagram and is owned by a social media influencer, Philip Wang, who has over thirty, three hundred fifty thousand subscribers to his YouTube channel. EST Prime Steakhouse. We actually had conditioned the Sheraton Hotel to include a steakhouse, and city staff approved their menu to ensure this. The Camp Transformation Center. This is a franchise fitness center that exists in several states like Arizona, Nevada, Oregon, and Florida. TK92 Korean Barbecue. This is the owner's second location. Their first one is in Las Vegas. And two years ago, staff met with the property owner at ICSC, who is familiar with the restaurant's owner, and we pitched San Gabriel to them for a second location. And since then, TK92 has been recognized by Eater LA as one of the twelve finest Korean barbecue restaurants in LA and Orange County. Jones Bicycle Two, who relocated from San Marino to San Gabriel and feels like the city has connected- city has connected him with his former customers but given him a wider reach for potential customers. Blossom Market, a food hall coming to the Mission District in summer of 2020. And I'll give you a little bit more about, information about this project later on. And due to our business attraction and retention efforts, in November 2018, we were recognized as a most business-friendly city finalist by the Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation amongst 88 cities in LA County. And as of July 1st, 2019, we have officially launched the San Gabriel Tourism and Improvement, San Gabriel Tourism and Marketing Improvement District, known as San Gabriel Travel and Tourism, which I'll also get into later on in this presentation. So I've laid out the challenges, successes, and what national retailers are looking for. So now I want to shift this presentation to discuss the current trends in economic development and what they mean to San Gabriel. Over the last few years, food, retailment, which is a coined term for retail and entertainment, and travel have been the areas where people are really putting their money. So let's start with food. We've all heard of the retail apocalypse over the years, but the truth is, retail is not dying, but it is changing, and food is the new retail. This is a trend that just keeps growing stronger. People are looking for that Instagrammable moment where they can show off their beautiful plate and plug their friends in on what they tried that day. Consumers have been shifting spending away from varied menu chains like Chili's or Applebee's and toward more specialty concepts, um, where they can get a unique and authentic meal. Food is the new anchor, and malls and plazas are also adapting to this trend. They're redoing their food courts into more hipster and casual dining areas and incorporating, incorporating fine dining and service, but full-service restaurants such as the Din Tai Fung at the Westfield San Anita Mall in Arcadia and Del Frisco Steakhouse at the Westfield Mall in Century City. So food in San Gabriel. San Gabriel has a very strong food culture. Every time we step out of this city and meet with colleagues around Southern California, we always hear, "Oh, San Gabriel, you guys have really good restaurants over there." And they're right. The restaurants in this city are continuously featured in media outlets like LA Times Food, Eater, Infatuation, and Zagat. When Michelin came to Los Angeles this spring, they deemed three restaurants in San Gabriel worthy of the bib-gorman category. The bib-gorman category highlights restaurants that serve high-quality meals, which include two courses and a glass of wine or dessert for less, for $40 or less. There are only 88 total bib-gorman restaurants in all of California, and we have three of them right here in our city. And those restaurants are Mian, Dong Lai Shan, and Shanghai Number One Seafood. And the food culture here is so strong that restaurants are the top sales tax generator. This is not a common feature in other cities. We can expect our food culture to continue to grow with a new food hall, new food hall coming, new food hall establishment coming to the Mission District next year at the former Masonic Lodge. Blossom Market will feature 13 food, beverage, and other retail offering stalls, and we believe that this will be a game changer and serve as a new anchor for the Mission District. Retailment. Businesses are looking for creative ways to get people into their stores. They understand that people are more and more shopping online for convenience, and 53 of in-store purchases are driven by technology, such as ads on Facebook, Yelp reviews, or YouTube ads. A great example of a company who understands this is Casper. Perhaps some of you have either heard their ads over the radio or seen a commercial. This is a company who, for many years, operated through online sales and have successfully, have successfully done so by letting you try their mattress for 100 days and sending a courier to pack up and remove the mattress from your house if you decide that it's not for you. But this exceptional customer service experience does not stop here. Casper understands that there is still a large group of people who want to feel the product before they commit to purchasing it. Over the last few years, Casper has opened what they call nap centers, where they will give you a pair of pajamas and an eye mask and allow you to test their beds in a private and pressure-free space. And I have a short clip for you of a new real retail concept also popping up in different parts of the world. I think you can stop it there, Marilyn. Does anyone have any idea what they just saw? Yeah, that's the same reaction I had when I saw that video. So what you just saw is a store concept called Gentle Monster. Gentle Monster is also an online business that features luxury-brand sunglasses who venture to open brick-and-mortar stores that operate much differently than your typical sunglass hut. They have designed their stores to align retail with engaging the customer, and doing this has helped increase their revenue by 35% in 2016. Retailment in San Gabriel. In San Gabriel, food is the entertainment. There are so many types of restaurants that a postmate service just cannot bring you, and people do appreciate that. People enjoy the opportunity to cook their meat in a hot soup or take a picture with a good drink in front of this artistic sign. And just as a side note, we will be seeing a new mural pop up here in the Mission District at the Mission View Plaza. The Design Review Commission has approved a tile design that incorporates elements from the Latino and Asian culture into a festive scene. Furthermore, retail and entertainment work together in places like the Mission District, where you can take a tour at the Mission San Gabriel Archangel and grab a sandwich at Polciano's after, or grab dinner at the pizza place or Luna's after seeing the Nutcracker at the San Gabriel Mission Playhouse. In addition, we like to bring events where you can shop and be entertained, such as the Cinco de Mayo Mercado, Dumpling and Beer Fest, and Fairbucan, where people can have a night out in the open air and support our local businesses and try the food here. We even want to invite businesses from the region to partake in our events, to show them the possibilities in San Gabriel. In fact, Workaholic, who participated as a vendor over the years at Lunar New Year and Dumpling and Beer, will have its first brick-and-mortar presence here in the Mission District at the upcoming Blossom Market Food Hall. Travel. According to Visit California, travel spending has increased by $40 billion within the last eight years. LA County itself reached a historic milestone in 2018, welcoming 50 million visitors for the first time ever and accomplishing the destination's ambitious tourist goal two years earlier than expected. Visitors pumped an all-time high of $23.9 billion directly into the LA economy. And perhaps some of you have heard that travel from China to the US has declined over the last few years. And while this is true nationwide, the Los Angeles area appears to be the exception. According to the Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board, the share of Chinese tourists who visited LA County while in the US grew from 35% in 2017 to 41% last year. A record of 1.2 million visitors came from China in 2018, making Los Angeles the number one ranked US city for Chinese travelers. And as you can see in this graph here, food service is the largest segment of travel spending, followed by accommodations. This is a great sign for a city like ours with an abundance of restaurants, and also shows that people really do care about where they stay. Travel in San Gabriel. We've been told that we're the envy of the San Gabriel Valley, because in San Gabriel, we have two major luxury hotels with a third one on the rise, the Hilton, Sheraton, and upcoming Curio. Historically, the Hilton has done very well, and occupancy rates have been high. The Sheraton Los Angeles-San Gabriel, who received the 2018 Hotel of the Year Award in honor of its high standards of personal service, exceptional staff training and development, and high guest satisfaction scores, is also on tracks, on track to do just as well. Over half a million people came to San Gabriel last year and during encounters with hotel guests. We've learned that many people come from all over the US to San Gabriel because of its proximity to downtown Los Angeles, Disneyland, and historic, and local historic attractions. Not to mention, people are now traveling for food, and San Gabriel is a foodie's destination. So these three trends, food, retail, retailment, and travel can be summed up into one word, and that word is experience. People are looking for an experience. People want to take a picture in front of this mural after they've grabbed a cup of coffee. They want to visit their family for the New Year and partake in a celebration like Lunar New Year. They want to record this robot taking their luggage up to their hotel room. They want to come to the Mission San Gabriel Archangel and learn history. They want experiences, period. So how do we take advantage of this demand? You establish something called a Tourism and Marketing Improvement District, which, again, will be referred to as San Gabriel Travel and Tourism. A Tmid is a nonprofit organization that provides direct benefit to the payers through an assessment. In San Gabriel's case, this is applicable to hotels with 100 rooms or more, and the assessment is an additional 1% of the room rate. Currently, this is applicable to the Hilton, Sheraton, and upcoming Curio. This is, this assessment is to be distinguished from a tax which goes into the city's general fund. This assessment cannot be diverted into general fund, general government programs. The nonprofit board determines what tourism services and improvements this assessment will fund. If you look at this map, you may notice that San Gabriel, right here, is one of the only cities in the surrounding region that has a Tmid, other than Pasadena and Clermont, of course. The reason San Gabriel Travel and Tourism was established, because it helps preserve the high occupancy, high occupancy our hotels have. Ultimately, we cannot run the risk of losing our hotel occupancies to neighboring cities where hotels are now popping up. We need to be one step ahead of the game in how we're going to market San Gabriel as a destination. San Gabriel Travel and Tourism is important because by having more heads and beds at the hotels within the city, and as, as the occupancy rates increase, the transient occupancy tax increases as well. And while the businesses and benefit, and hotels benefit from travelers' spending, the community benefits from the transient occupancy tax that go toward funding things like street improvements, police, community services, and more. San Gabriel Travel and Tourism will provide potential funding for programs that may include art and cultural programs, wayfinding signage and gateway enhancements, and a visitor information And on a final note, we will be moving forward this year with some new and existing economic development efforts. A new component we're adding are small business seminars. This month, we'll be meeting with a representative from the Small Business Administration to collaborate on topics that would be, that would be beneficial to our business community. We want our businesses, we want our business community to take advantage of the technologies that can strengthen their sales. We also want to expose them to topics like where to get funding or how to manage a business, and we hope to have these seminars scheduled on a regular basis. We will continue to reach out to the national retailers, but want to focus more on bringing those independents that will diversify the types of retail and food offerings in the city. Last fall, we kicked off the Mission District Stakeholders Quarterly Meeting and have found these meetings to be very useful in networking and working collaboratively with businesses and property owners to make the Mission District a better place. We will continue hosting a Commercial Brokers Breakfast, where we connect with commercial brokers and developers on an annual basis to prevent, I'm sorry, to present new opportunities in San Gabriel. We will be providing updates on current and potential projects through a quarterly newsletter. Our first one was issued earlier this month. And marketing and promotions. Again, we want to ensure that people from the region come and discover our restaurants and businesses, and we'll be doing that by introducing Made in San Gabriel videos, where we will go behind the scenes in some of our businesses and learn about the amazing things that happen there. We will also be hosting, um, our third annual Fairview Con in the San Gabriel Village on August 1st between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM. This will be an evening filled with art, comics, food trucks, and entertainment. And on October 4th, 2019, we'll be hosting our fifth annual Dumpling and Beer Fest. We finally decided to make this on a Friday, like many attendees have requested in the past, and are looking to expand the event area and incorporate new elements. And we will continue to develop our social media campaign and look to work with social media influencers. And that sums up my economic development update. We will be posting this presentation online on our website if anyone wants more information, and we do anticipate doing this presentation for community groups and staff who would like to know more on economic development. And I want to thank you for your time and more than happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Yellen. Any questions? Councilmember Liao.
Thank you, Mayor. So recently, I've been approached by, uh, we have two, uh, real high-end jewelry stores, okay? Chonghing and Hing Wali. And for the past dozen years, they're, I guess, as, you know, they are number one, number two, sales tax producers, because if you walk in the store, nothing is under 50,000. So all these tourists came and they bought all kinds of Rolex watches, diamond rings, whatever. But recently, they suffer, uh, because hardly any tourists that come to our city to buy those expensive items now. So is there a way that we can, uh, help to promote their business because they're thinking about moving to other cities? For instance, one told me, "Oh, we're going to move, we're going to move to West Covina." I said, "Why West Covina? There's no tourists in West Covina." But we should retain our businesses. So is there a plan to help them?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Angelica Frost Saluboo, the Economic Development Manager. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Liao. We have heard that, generally speaking, the Chinese tourists are not, are no longer spending their money on jewelry or higher-end products as they have in the past. In fact, we hear from Visit California and the Los Angeles Tourism Board that Chinese tourists specifically are looking for experiences. They, they come to areas where they can not just go shopping and eat, but also go skiing or go surfing. Again, that trend of experiences is very big. I do have, have conversations regularly with Chonghing and have reached out to Hing Wali as well, um, in terms of their plans. I've not heard anything negative in terms of them leaving, and we absolutely want to continue to promote our businesses.
Councilmember Stanzin.
Thank you, Mayor Pooh. Claudia, your report was wonderful. Thank you. You hit it right on the nose. Many of us just got back from ICA, and that was the thread of the conversation, was in when it comes to development, making it an experience, whether it's hotel, retail, but everybody wants an experience in some way, and most of it could be with food, but then there also are other elements that make it even a better experience. So you're right on target with that, because that was the topic of conversation with all cities at the conference. So thank you for that. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Machaca.
Yes. Thank you so much. That was really informative, and I look forward to seeing it on the website. I think the community needs to know also. And so my first suggestion is, with the new community development newsletter, it would be great if you can somehow put nuggets of that, you know, every quarter, kind of make that an educational messaging to our community, because it's, you know, you get the phone calls, but there's so many other people there that kind of sit there trying to figure out what's going on. So this is just a real good guide, just pieces of it every time. I wanted to know, where is that mural that you're planning to put up for these wonderful photos that hopefully they, they're interested in taking?
In the Mission View Plaza.
Okay, help me, where, where is the mu?
Oh, so are you familiar where Vietnam House and Bon Chon Chicken?
Yes.
So the new structure, the addition that's being built, the mural, it's kind of like a hidden gem, so to say. It's from the parking lot walkway into that new development area.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the Mission District you mentioned, but no, it's Mission View.
Mission View.
Okay. Okay, I look forward to seeing that. I know El Pavo put up a really beautiful mural also, and it's a good, good moment to take those Instagram photos. And then also wanted to understand, you didn't mention about how property owners, I mean, we call it land banking. The conference I went to in Nalea, we talked about that extensively, specifically the fact that, you know, most cities, the most you can do is maybe have, you know, violations if they don't keep it up, if there's, they create blight. I mean, there's ways of trying to encourage, but we do have quite a few lots. I'm thinking of the one on De I'm thinking of the one on Del Mar and Listunas, where that would be a great piece of property, whether it's In-N-Out or Starbucks, a drive-through Starbucks. I mean, there's just so much possibility, but I know they're not. And it's gated with this green tarp. It's kind of an eyesore. And, you know, what more can be done to encourage them to sell? It's probably more Angelica or Armanet, but, you know, what more can we do? Because I get a lot of comments about that corner.
Hi, yes. So our role really is to encourage property owners to develop their properties. We, you know, hate to see good, especially intersections, sit there vacant. At the end of the day, we cannot force a private landowner to develop their property, but we absolutely regularly check in with them. We encourage them. We introduce them to developers. We try to matchmake, but again, it's ultimately their decision.
Okay.
Can I jump in on that?
Sure.
Quick question, because we've had this conversation also with Mark in terms of, you know, how to be potentially more aggressive with some of these property owners. And so I agree with Vice Mayor Machaca that, you know, if there's some program we can develop that helps to at least disincentivize, you know, idle property, blight, and things like that, then that might, you know, create the incentive to do something. So, you know, it's all about carrots and sticks. So I appreciate the comment from Vice Mayor Machaca.
Thank you. And lastly, so you talked about national retailers and how it's difficult to attract them. But I understand, I mean, let me rephrase that. What are some of the national ones? You listed a few that I guess qualify as national. But for example, is Aldi still in the works? Has that been decided yet, or we're still in conversation? I consider that a national chain.
And it is. And yeah, as I mentioned in my presentation, we're still having these conversations, and the developer at that site is still working with Aldi. I don't know how much more I can say.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Minna Chaparian. I will say the conversations are continuing. Fortunately and unfortunately, we can't release details of any one particular transaction until things are finalized. We have had, as staff mentioned, we've had several discussions with several different grocery stores. The interest is definitely there. The challenge is finding the right site. We've had several conversations with Aldi. We hope they continue to have interest in our city. We're hoping to see some type of new grocery store in our community in the next two to three years.
Okay. And are there any other national retailers you can share today that possibly might be coming?
As I think she mentioned in her presentation, we've had positive conversations. The big challenge is sites. Unfortunately, we don't have sites available in our community that are large enough for these retailers to consider. We certainly are continuing to work with a property owner that owns the former Chevy O'Donnell site, hoping that if that site is to be developed, that would be a great location for some sort of large-scale commercial center that may have enough land. It's a little under five acres. That may be one of the very few parcels left in our city that has the depth, because the site is actually pretty deep to be able to house a number of different uses. And we certainly would hope that some type of grocery use would be considered for that site.
Okay. Okay. And I guess the last question is, you touched upon it a bit. You know, I'm always asked, why do people want to come to San Gabriel and stay in San Gabriel? Why do we have such a high vacancy or occupancy in our hotels? And I try to explain it, but, you know, you have so many other hotels that are being developed. You know, you have El Monte that's already there. You have Monterey Park that's building one where I used to live, right on Hellman and Atlantic. But I'm just still trying to understand. You mentioned the proximity to downtown and Disneyland, the food, the local history. Is there something else that is bringing them here? Because, I mean, just the surrounding areas, I mean, there's so much competition. I'm still, I'm even surprised sometimes. I mean, how do we retain them?
Yeah. So I think we're also, in addition, a bit more local to some attractions. Again, they want to come for an experience. So when they come, they do visit the Mission San Gabriel, or they will stop by the Huntington Botanical Garden. We're very close to these attractions. And I think also our hotels do provide a luxury experience, and I think that's something that has served them very well in maintaining their occupancy.
Because I'm thinking like Pasadena. I mean, there's museums there and there. They have a whole array of experiences there. And for us to be able to compete with Pasadena, I mean, there's something else that's taking place there that I don't think has really been mentioned.
Well, a few things. So in addition to what Claudia mentioned, there's been instances where we, as staff, are visiting our local hotels, and we will see a visitor who prefers to stay in San Gabriel over a room in Pasadena, for example. Well, our rates are very reasonable right now in our hotels. So comparatively, if you're a traveler and you're coming to a conference nearby, would you rather stay at a relatively high-end hotel at a reasonable price or stay in potentially an older hotel room in a different community? I think the good thing for us has been some of our hotels have hit the market at the right time. We're hopeful that in the next few months, we'll have our third hotel join basically our community of hotel rooms. And we're offering brand-new hotels that are relatively close to a lot of different things happening in the area. I think some of our travelers like the familiarity. If there's a cultural familiarity, there aren't a lot of language barriers if they're an international traveler. So I think those are definitely assets we have. Not only are you getting a good room at a great rate, you're getting a variety of restaurants near you that are literally within walking distance to where you're staying, and you're really close within, depending on the extent of where you want to travel, between 15 minutes to an hour, you can go pretty much anywhere and everywhere. And I think that makes us a really ideal location. For example, in the last few years, we've had a huge number of visitors staying in our local hotels that are coming here for the Santa Anita Park. Because again, we're not that far, but they're getting a pretty luxury experience, and the drive is only 15 minutes away. And I think we're going to continue capitalizing on some of those experiences that are happening maybe outside of our city, yet it's actually still very close to staying in our community. And our goal is, I think, with our Tourism District, is to really start heavy promotions on all the things you can do as part of our tourism. We're working with the hotels to have information available at the desk, so when visitors are coming to San Gabriel, they're getting a pamphlet that tells them all the different things they can do in the city. With a lot of our special events, we're also promoting those events in the city, because if you're coming and asking the concierge or the front desk, "Well, what can I do?" We're now working with the hotels to provide them with information on local attractions and things to do, and that also includes our special events. So I hope I gave you a more comprehensive answer.
Yeah, that's a good answer, because I didn't even think about the rates compared to Pasadena. We're still very reasonable.
Under $200 a night, you're getting a really decent hotel room.
And then lastly, well, specifically with the hotels, I mean, I think the influencers really do make a difference. My daughter is in that role, and I got to benefit from it on my recent trip to Morocco. And I was really surprised, you know, that level of social media that they do does bring in a wide range of groups, and there's interest there. And it's just shocking to me, but it's something we should really consider to do more of, just to bring people from all over the world, not just, you know, California or even this country for that matter.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Claudia on that presentation. I think it was your first one, correct? Very well done. I'm sure there was some help there, but it was well presented.
Thank you.
It was well presented?
Yes, shout out to my bosses.
Yeah, yeah. So well presented. I'm glad you had the opportunity. The information was timely, as Councilmember Costanzo said, and I think all of us did benefit from this. Rather than just a report, it was well presented, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to echo Councilmember Harrington's comments and congratulate you on completing your first presentation here at the City Council.
Thank you, Mayor.
It was very informative. I think if I, at the risk of just being, you know, super maybe nitpicky, is, you know, I think I have, the only thing I'll say is that I have a little bit of a problem with when we're calling those, the grocery stores, "American grocers," you know. I actually, for me personally, I think I would prefer to just call them, I mean, I think I would prefer to call them even mainstream grocers. Because especially in this day and age, you know, there's a lot of use of the word "American" in an exclusionary way, and this, that's not, you know, what my ideal or what I think of as the American ideal. And, you know, the use of that word here is almost, not that it's a bad word, of course not. I mean, I'm just saying that it almost suggests then that, you know, what we got are somehow un-American or, you know, somehow bad or wrong. So I, that's my comment on that. And other comments I'll convey, you know, later, because I did plan on actually saying stuff about this during my council comments, because some of the things that I wanted to bring back from U.S. Conference of Mayors as well as ICA, you know, do relate to economic development as well. So I appreciate the efforts of staff in bringing this report for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council? Okay, seeing none. Next item, please.
Item seven, public comment. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you wish to address the City Council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
So any member of the public would like to speak to the City Council this time? Okay, seeing none. I will close public comments. Next item, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a quick update. I talked to the chief earlier this week from the mountains at Camp SG, and he said that's been a tremendous experience for both the officers that are being camp counselors and the children that were selected to go on our first, and hopefully, first of many of those as we get bigger and better at that. So more to come later on when he comes back and has a full report.
Thank you, Mark. Let's see, next item.
Council comments and conference and meeting reports.
Let's start with Vice Mayor Machaca.
First item, I wanted to just share with our colleagues that Councilmember Harrington and myself and our City Manager met with Athens and, you know, to begin the negotiation process. It's quite informative. We learned more about trash disposal than we ever thought we would or wanted to. There was, interesting on the Evergreen contract. Ours is 11 years, but we came to find that some of the other cities are actually negotiating even more, 35 to 40 years. So that was pretty shocking, but it's good information to have. And with the help of our staff, we will be getting more details about items that have been changing specifically. A lot of the new contracts are taking effect July 1st, so some of the data we had was already stale. So we're going to be getting some updated information. Both Councilmember Harrington and I, we were in full agreement when it came to making sure that our, whatever we decide, that we wanted to give options to all of you. I think specifically you called it a buffet of sorts, just a variety of options. So when we do the work, bring it back to all of you, and we can decide collectively how we would like to proceed, because there are a variety of options. But we also were in full agreement on the fact that we wanted to make sure our residents, when they got their bills, that they understood that the rates are not just driven by us, you know, negotiating, but also by state tax measures. Right now in place, there are three, AB 939, 341, and 186. And then taking effect in 2020 and 2022, it's going to be AB 1594 and SB 1383. So it's important for the customers to understand when measures are passed, the impact it has to them on, you know, with their bills. So we will also be working on that. And anyway, so we will continue to have those meetings. Second, again, I wanted to applaud Community Development Department for their, that first newsletter, the three-pager. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to look at it. It highlights the approved development projects and the pending projects, and it was just really well done. And I just really, I appreciate it, and I know all of us appreciate the fact that, you know, we keep talking about transparency and trying to improve communications with the community. I mean, that is like the model, in my mind, of really sharing that type of information. I think in the past, maybe it's a little bit of a secret, or it's been on the website, but not a lot of people could find it. And now it's out there, and also Jonathan Foo for publishing it. And then lastly, just a reminder to everyone, La Casa is having their second annual gift card party. It's this Friday from 6:30 to 8:30. So it's either $20 entry fee per person or a $20 gift certificate. And there's hors d'oeuvres, and there will be drinks. And our very own Captain Valdez will be the bartender, so everything will go well. He'll make sure. He's also a board member, as I am. So, anyway, so please encourage everyone to stop by. It's only two hours, so there's plenty of time to do something afterwards for those who like to stay up late. 8:30 for me is late enough. But anyway, so hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Machaca. How about Councilmember Costanzo?
Thank you, Mayor Poo. I want to welcome Camilia Vera here representing the Chamber of Commerce tonight. Thanks for your time here. And as I mentioned earlier, I did just get back from ICA conference, and many of the topics are of great concern of ours, pension obligations, affordable housing, the census. And so it was really relevant to everything that we're making decisions on today. And I thought it was a very well-put-together conference and learned a lot. And it's always fun to connect with other electeds and see what's happening in their cities and what they're doing. We had Senator Portantino there, and I think my takeaway from that too was, you know, he asked us, "How many times do we connect with our legislatures?" And it's not very often sometimes, but they need to hear from us. And it's important to continue that conversation. If we don't agree with something or we agree with something, it really impacts how they're going to vote. So he kind of put the burden on us, which I think is good, because it opens our eyes that we do need to be involved more with Sacramento and stop complaining about it if we don't have a voice. So again, it was a very good conference.
Thank you. Councilmember Liao.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did attend the same ICA conference, and there are several things that we can learn from other cities. Number one is the city app. It's from this Gardena. They have an app. It's called Gardena Contact. And, yeah, I guess it's developed by one of this company. They know how to do it. I think Essella, that's the name of the company. But the speaker was from Oracle. And they can help the city to put up app, and any residents has any issues about the potholes, about the street lights, about any crimes event, they can just log on the app. And for instance, the Gardena receives about 4,000 annually reports. So that's something that maybe you can consider to do. Another one is the census, and this we can learn from the city of Norwalk, because they are promoting 2020 census now. So they use their city vehicles with advertisements. And I found out each one, each vehicle costs about $1,200. And so I think that's a reasonable advertisement for, you know, a whole year. And to remove it, it's probably another $100, so it's not a big deal. But I think it's all the money worth spent, because if we miscount, just one person is $2,000. If we miscount, you know, $3,000, it's $6 million. So compare the money that we're going to spend on the advertisement for the city vehicles, that's really minimal. Actually, I'm thinking about doing my own car, but I guess I had to get approval from our city attorney and city manager. But I always spend my own money. from our city attorney and city manager, but I always spend my own money, um, and, you know, uh, can drive around the city and people can recognize that we're, uh, doing this, you know, 2020 census. Um, yeah, so I, I, I think that's something that we can learn, uh, from other cities, but also, uh, another one is the, uh, city of Claremont. Um, you know, they started this, uh, homeless count program, and they receive, uh, $1 million from Major H. So I think that's, uh, something that maybe we can follow, so, because they don't have that many homeless population in their city either, but, uh, but, you know, we all can, uh, do prevention work or to, uh, do a better job helping, uh, these, you know, vulnerable, uh, population. Uh, and that's about it. I think it's a great, uh, convention and it's worth, uh, going back every year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to give a few comments about ICA as well, and, um, Councilmember Liao, I was just betting that you would talk about some of the bonds they talked about. I lost that bet. Cause that was, that was a very good, um, presentation. I think overall, the theme of this conference was, um, local control. Um, the state has just been, you know, nipping away at our control, and it's like a piece here and a piece here and a piece here. And all of a sudden, cities have really just become, uh, you know, just, we do whatever the state says. We follow their rules, rather than, uh, the theme on, on most of these was actually, don't wait for the state to take action, figure creative solutions for, by yourself and for yourself, or partner with your cities regionally. Um, if you have homelessness, don't just try and solve it in San Gabriel, partner with Rosemead, partner with Temple City, partner with Alhambra, Monterey Park, you know, Samurino, get us all together. And the odds of solving something become that much better. So the, the, and this even came from, um, Senator Portantino, don't wait on the state. You know, go out there and, and make things happen. An example is, um, when we had the OPEB presentation, there was something around night, 390 billion with a B of unfunded liability from the state, if you account everybody, the state and all the local jurisdictions and districts. They had some creative solutions, I think they, they, they weren't just giving us, oh, the sky is falling. Said, they, they said, here's some things cities can do on their own that can, um, it's, it's a very small course correction, each one of these, but every one of them gets compounded with each other and over time. So they showed some very, um, interesting charts where, let's just say, rather than going to, to, um, Calpers and, and say, "Hey, we want to, we want to re, refinance this, and we can, we're going to make a higher payment." They said, "Just figure out what the payment should be and make the higher payment, and then you're not locked in a contract with Calpers, but you'll get the same effect." It's kind of like, don't refinance your house, make a bigger payment, and you're, and you'll go down faster. That way you're not locked into the higher payment. If a fiscal emergency comes, you can absorb it better, because you're not locked into that. So there were just lots of creative ideas like that, so I would ask that, um, I think Nancy has the link for the ICA, all the presentations, they, they have them all up already, so that'd be a great thing to, um, to see. And so I would really like to see us reach out to some of our communities, our neighbors and say, "What are you doing?" And I would like to expand a little, even further than, you know, one city, two cities, like, say, you know, "What are you guys doing for homelessness? What are you doing for affordable housing?" I think, um, the mayor of Beverly Hills said, you know, "In Beverly Hills, we have a homelessness problem too, but we don't have the space to put it, so we're partnering with, you know, with LA and other cities where we will do the, um, how, either low income housing or whatever, whatever type their problem is." And they'll work with LA, like, right around their borders and, because of theirs, they have something around 7% on low income in Beverly Hills, which a lot of people don't realize. No, no, it's, it's a regional low income, so there's, there's a lot of renters in Beverly Hills, and there's people that just, they get forced out because of rates. And so they're working with their, their neighboring cities to, um, they'll, they may build projects there, they, they discuss within the neighboring city with their funds. And then they can, um, you know, they, when you're partnering with more cities, your odds of getting grants go up. Um, the bigger projects means you get more help. So there's just a lot of creative ideas, I'd really look into partnering with other cities, because, let's say we keep saying San Gabriel has no, um, you know, affordable land. Well, other, other cities around us may not have affordable land either, but if three cities finance it and one city builds it, we all get the credit, and we, we will split the credit. So there's a lot of creative ways to do that. One of us individually may not be able to do it, but two, three, four of us may be able to, so. There were some good takeaways there, um, and I would really just look at, do a deep dive into the presentations, cause it's in the material. Um, so that was, I think out of, it didn't seem like it on the, on the agenda, but this had a lot more, um, uh, the theme and the, the actual, it wasn't just present, presenting problems. All of the speakers gave solutions, I think, so that was a very powerful one. So that was, that's my report for tonight, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, I was also at ICA this past weekend, and I think my colleagues have done a really good job of summarizing a lot of the, um, things that were important about it. One thing I will highlight is, um, you know, I'm gonna, you know, blatantly steal from Councilmember Robert Gonzalez in San Fernando, uh, cause when they were, he organized a panel on the census, and he talked about how they're using social media, and they came up with a hashtag, um, to use as a tag, you know, whenever we are sending out messaging about, uh, the, the census, and, uh, and I think that's such a, that one thing is such a brilliant idea to try to make sure that we can reach as many people as possible. So, uh, if we had a hashtag like, hashtag "we count SG" or hashtag "count SG," something along those lines, I think we could, um, uh, leverage then, um, the social media to get the word out as much as possible to, um, to get a complete and accurate count. Cause frankly, also with the, you know, because we do have a very high, uh, percentage of our city is, uh, is in the hard to count areas or hard to count populations, sometimes it's, um, getting households, the way you can, you can get households to complete the census count is actually through the young people in the household, right? It's through the, the children, especially if the older generation is not as English proficient or not as, um, engaged civically, it's the younger generation that's actually engaged civically in that, um, and I know this is true for myself, you know, when I had to serve as a translator for my parents sometimes, um, you know, when I was a kid. So, uh, and I think that's a common story in our community, and, um, we can, uh, we can leverage those kinds of resources, uh, through, uh, some creative marketing. Then the other thing is, the last time I said I would, uh, sift through some of the materials from the, uh, US Conference of Mayors a couple of weeks ago and, and bring back to, you know, just report out to the council for, for your benefit, the kinds of things that I thought were really, really, relevant for us. Um, one of it, and this is where it relates to the economic development, um, the city of Honolulu actually did this thing called a, uh, Key to the City, which was a, a card, uh, uh, like a credit card that they issued. And it was like, basically giving every person there, um, the benefits of being a resident. Um, and, uh, also with, you know, so you could get, to go to the zoo for free, you could go to, uh, various other, you could take, uh, they caught this bike share program called Bekey, um, you could take a, a Bekey for free. And I got to thinking, you know, I've seen other, other things, for instance, in Barcelona or London, they have the Barcelona card, the London card, those are more privately run, where you, for $30, you can purchase a car that gives you access to their public transit and other discounts and benefits. And, and so through the TMID, I'm wondering if that's something that we might be able to, uh, to do, which, uh, you know, that the T, the SGT could do, which is come up with a package of benefits, you know, for things, activities, places that we want to encourage people to go to and provide them with incentives to do that, like, uh, small discount at the, uh, Mission Gift Shop. Or, uh, you know, if, uh, if Mike Pulciano would be willing to give like, uh, free soda or something like that, if you come in, you know, for a sandwich, or, you know, things like that, so that we can actually incentivize, um, tourists who come to San Gabriel to do some of the things and, and visit some of the places that, you know, we'd like to highlight and, and showcase for them. Um, related to that is a thing that Airbnb is doing right now, which is called Airbnb Experiences. And through Airbnb Experiences, you can hire essentially a local to provide you with a curated experience, a curated local experience. And that got me thinking like, well, we have so many great resources within our community, I'm just going to use Mary Camerano as an example, you know? And this didn't have to be done through Airbnb, but maybe it's another thing that, uh, is, uh, part of this package of, of curated experiences, cause I think this retail, retailment, or whatever we're calling it, uh, the idea of, of promoting or, you know, if anybody watches Game, Game of Thrones, one of the famous closing lines is, "There's nothing more powerful than a good story." And we have so many good stories to tell here in our community, um, and, and there's actually so many people who can help tell those stories. That's why I brought up Mary Camerano, cause I, you know, had, when we had a, a troupe from Hunan Province in China come do a performance at the Mission Playhouse, I asked Mary if she would do a, a curated tour of the mission for, for all of us, and she did. It was, it was fantastic, uh, Councilmember Liao was, um, was with us on that tour. And, uh, so imagine if you could just, if we could, um, somehow harness all of that, uh, that capital and, um, and, and bundle these things together, so it's really easy and convenient for a group of people who are visiting San Gabriel, whether they're staying at the hotels or not, maybe even, to be able to, to, to engage with some of the stories that we have to tell. Um, and have those people, like, for instance, you know, a, a, any of the leaders of the Native American tribes who, um, can help tell the stories of, 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 of their people and the, the culture and, and, you know, what used to be here and all those things. Um, these are things that I think, you know, we've not, um, since, ever, even since before being first elected to the, to the council, I've always heard that, you know, we're not capitalizing on our potential. And to a certain extent, that, I think that is very, very true, and, and part of that potential is, um, is the fact that we have all these stories to tell, and, um, we just need to find ways to incentivize people to do them and, and, and offer them in a, in a package or, or a way that, you know, hopefully, will encourage them to engage with those stories. So that, those were two things, and then the last thing I, I wanted to mention is this, uh, thing called Sourcewell, which is started by Mayor Garcetti and others, which is an, an electric vehicle purchasing collaborative. Uh, what that allows for is to use, uh, the sort of joint purchasing power of a larger, of a, a larger, it's like when we, when we do, um, purchases, uh, of fleet through a national purchasing association, we can waive the bidding, you, you kind of know you're getting the best possible pricing for those types of vehicles. Well, you know, this is the same kind of idea, except for EVs. And, um, and I, you know, was, uh, I brought this up to, to Mark during one of our meetings, and, and I, and I think that there's a potential here, you know, it's not just Sourcewell for, for electrifying, cause I, I, at this point, I actually don't see any downside to electrifying our, our fleet. Um, of course, fire is a different, different, uh, thing, and, and maybe police would have, you know, some certain issues, but, you know, the pickup that you can get in a EV is actually a lot faster than you can in a, in a gas vehicle, and actually, we, um, you know, you would save a lot on, on fuel purchases. Public Works, there's, you know, heavy duty vehicles now that have, uh, the same kind of power, same kind of capacity as any, as any, you know, uh, carbon fueled, uh, vehicle that's out there now. So anyway, you know, I wanna, I just wanted to mention this for the whole council, so we start thinking about this, because, um, you know, frankly, you know, as we mentioned one time before, when we were, we were actually giving up our CNG, uh, Public Works trucks and, and going back to diesel, um, it doesn't make sense, we're just driving around our own community, polluting our own children, polluting our own neighborhoods, you know? So, um, I think that, um, you know, if we, uh, could do our small part, you know, in this, in all of this regards, then, um, it also makes me feel like, you know, uh, we're, still, we're, also, we're contributing also to a, a larger public good, um, which is, uh, combating, combating climate change, or at least, you know, reducing pollution, we can all, living in LA, we can all appreciate that, uh, we have enough, um, as it is. Um, so those are my, um, updates with respect to that. Earlier this evening, we had approved, uh, some, uh, consultants to help us do some, uh, outreach for Prop 68, a Prop 68 grant application, so I wanted to inform the, the, the public that the final community outreach meeting to receive the concept plan that will be submitted as part of the Prop 68 grant application for the renovation of Smith Park and Pool will be held on Wednesday, July 17th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Smith Park. Don't all write it down? All at once? Yeah, I guess that, that's tomorrow, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Smith Park. Um, and, you know, we, I think Director Perez has some high, high, uh, hopes and, and goals for this, uh, which I applaud and support, and I, you know, a lot of facilities at Smith Park are in need of, uh, updating, to say the least. Updating and/or replacement, so, so, uh, if you have time, please attend that. Um, we do have the National Night Out coming up, um, you know, two Tuesdays from now, please join us for that. That's August 6th, um, here in the Mission District. Um, and, uh, and I think, uh, just a sort of, uh, corollary to that, the ribbon cutting for the Marshall Park Police Satellite Station will also be on August 8th, which is the, uh, Thursday right after that. And I believe, um, Fairview Con is coming up too, right? That, uh, that was, uh, announced during our economic development update here, I believe that's on August 1st, and that will be there, uh, at Fairview, so thanks to the staff for all the efforts to, um, bring these events forward. And I just want to do another shout out for, for community service and Director Perez, uh, you know, the, uh, the weekly, every Thursday night, you know, summer night series is, uh, something that I think that, uh, is, is, you know, what's become a great tradition for us here in San Gabriel, and something that, you know, very few other communities can boast. And, uh, I think that people come from, from all over to attend, to attend our events, so, uh, I think that they're, even though we may not always have time to attend all of them, uh, you know, I, I feel like that, uh, that kind of community engagement and that kind of, uh, you know, quality of life, uh, programming is, is very well worth it. So that's, uh, my report, and, okay, Councilmember Harrington?
I just wanted to, you triggered something I had, Jason, for the census.
Yes.
I think, um, regarding the kids, I think it'd be a good idea to leverage our partnership with the school district.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Like a mailer home, if not even do some staff presentations.
Yeah.
And then the kids would have a much, like, you know, obviously if it's elementary, you're going to have a lot lower understanding, but it's a great way to see community engagement, civics, local government, all at once, and explain to them, you know, that your community is directly affected by this, so we might want to reach out to the school superintendent.
Vice Mayor Machaca, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I wanted to mention also, when I went to the Mileo Conference, that was one of the key issues, that engaging our, our young students, typically high school, and we do have money set aside, they recommend it maybe a, a stipend of some sort, and that, you know, especially now with so much going on, I mean, it keeps changing, um, however, you know, there is still a lot of fear, and our, our young folks do instill that level of trust, and so having it at the school sites, because of course our schools benefit from it, I mean, there's grants and, you know, um, low cost, uh, foods, and it just goes on and on, so there's a tremendous, um, benefit, you know, it's economic value for our schools as well as our cities. And so when we do have our meeting, both, um, Mayor Pooh and myself were part of that committee, the census committee, that was one of the recommendations I was going to make.
Absolutely. Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, city attorney is reminding me that we shouldn't be discussing any items, but, um, during council comments, but, uh, Councilmember Costanzo?
I forgot one last thing, and not to take away from Director Perez's park meeting tomorrow, but, um, just saying the chamber is having their monthly mixer, Margaritaville, at the Mission, um, in their parish center, so that's 6:00 to 8:00 tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just as an update, hopefully, I mean, um, that, we have been having those census meeting, or, and we're scheduled to have, have the second one, through that, we will be establishing a complete count committee, and, um, as part of that committee, school district will certainly be included, faith organizations, including the Mission, and, uh, you know, all the other, um, faith, uh, institutions that we have in the city. Uh, I didn't realize that Church of Our Savior is actually the oldest Presbyterian church in all of LA County. No? It is, isn't it? What's, what is it then? Oh, I'm sorry, Episcopalian Church. Okay, okay, thank you for that. So, um, it would include all of the faith organizations. Okay, okay. Thank you for that. So it will include all of the faith organizations, and hopefully we can even reach out to the mosque, to the Dufapp Temple, and also all of our civic organizations, Rotary, Kiwanis, and all nonprofit organizations, 211, AYC, La Casa, I'm sure there's many, many others that I'm not. Women's Foundation, I'm sure. So you'll be getting these messages from lots of different, lots of different directions. Okay, so with that, then, due to the observance of National Night Out on August 6th, the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 20th, at 6:30 p.m. here in the council chamber. And, and we are adjourned. Thank you.